All right, welcome everyone. Welcome, tonight's our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 8, 2017. Welcome. For the record, all council members are present. We do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. And with that, if we can please all start with a moment of silence. Thank you. And if you'll please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We've got a couple of things going on tonight. We've got a recognition that we'd like to start off with. We've got two, and we'll start off with introductions for our new Fire Marshal. I'll turn to our Chief Knuckles and you can do your first presentation. Thanks.
I'd like to go ahead and bring Captain Vera up here. So Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for giving us this great opportunity to introduce you to your new Fire Marshal for the city of Morro Bay. First of all, I want to talk about Fire Marshal Tom Prowse. I wish I could bring him here tonight, but we all know he's a private man. I think I would have to use Chief Allen to help me get here if I had to. But Tom has served our city for well over 24 years, 16 years as our Fire Marshal. He has been known in our county to be a very efficient Fire Marshal and one of the best ones. His career actually started in government in 1972 when he worked for the State Assembly, sitting right next to Willie Brown as the Sergeant of Arms. Tom started his career with Sacramento Metro Fire Department and finished his fire career, professional fire career with Camp Rivers, putting 30 years in the fire service. To date, if you can imagine, Tom put in 45 years of government service to the citizens of the state of California. Tom is solely going to be missed. One is a mentor to me, a friend, and also just a phenomenal Fire Marshal. What I have here, Fire Marshal Matt Vera, Fire Captain Fire Marshal. Matt Vera is a graduate from the Tasker High School. He is a local, class of '82. That's a good year, Matt. He started with his career with the Tasker Fire Department in 1991 and he became a paramedic in 1996. While he was with the Tasker Fire Department, he became a fire field training officer for them in 2005. And he also managed their EMS program, including paramedic training, supplies and such. He also, Matt, works on two, correction, he works on two incident management teams, one for the federal government. Also, he responds as part of our local incident command team in our county. Matt obtained his fire prevention training for fire marshaling, fire inspections, plan checks, code enforcement, and fire investigation through the California State Fire Marshal's office. Also, Matt participates regionally through Northern California Cal Chief's Fire Prevention Committee and also locally through our Central Coast Fire Prevention Association. Matt served as Deputy Fire Marshal for City of Tascadero. Captain Matt Vera was selected through a process that attracted candidates throughout the state of California. Matt was selected for his ability to develop relationships, skills to resolve conflict, and his vision of the duties of the Fire Marshal. Captain Vera is locally raised in his family and his wife Mindy works at the Templeton School District and both his daughters attend Questa College. Captain Vera is a wonderful addition to our family and congratulations, Matt.
All right.
I just want to echo what Steve said. Tom Prowse, the Fire Marshal, I retired. He's a good guy and I really got to know him in the last week or so, there's some big shoes to fill. And I just want to thank the firehouse, all the guys in the firehouse who welcomed me and all the city employees. Everybody's been open to arm, what can I do to help you? How can I get you on your feet and get you going? And I truly appreciate that. I couldn't hope for any better result. I'm happy to be here, love to be here, and excited to serve Morro Bay. Thank you.
Righto, Matt, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you.
Next, Chief Allen. We've got another celebration here. Would you like us to come down?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and community. We're here to recognize and acknowledge the outstanding work of Officer Lou Rittering. And before I talk about that, I just wanted to underscore just a few facts. So MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, are in their 37th year, if you can believe that, of really championing the cause of reducing fatalities and accidents caused by under-influenced driving. Just a few statistics, in 2016, here in the state of California, 914 people lost their lives as a result of driving under-influenced accidents. And that represents a 29% of all total traffic deaths, and it's increasing. So we're at a point now where DUIs are actually increasing by about 4% per year. So I wanted to just give a little bit of background information. So I'm very proud to acknowledge Officer Lou Rittering for his outstanding efforts in DUI enforcement. He led our Morro Bay Police Department in arrests and just phenomenal the work that he does, and he does it with compassion, professionalism. And as I'm acknowledging Luke, I also want to acknowledge all of our officers. So in 2016, our police department in total made 49 arrests for DUI. We're already at 36 arrests year-to-date. Ladies and gentlemen, these officers are really in the business of saving lives. So your efforts to reduce DUI really represent one less call to a grieving family, getting that call in the middle of the night that their loved one is not going to be coming home as a result of DUIs. I want to acknowledge you, Officer Rittering, for your outstanding efforts and with that, our whole police department, for collectively addressing this very serious public safety concern. Matt, I'm sorry, Luke has brought his family here, his wonderful family. And I'm going to allow you to come forward and introduce your family and say a few words. And then we'll present the award.
Well, first and foremost, that's my wife Christina, holding our newest. She's holding our newest HESA, that needs about five months. And then we have Mark. Stand up, Mark. That's Mark. He's all sorts of energy, I'll tell you that. And then next to him is Lucy. And it's really the closest thing I get to Luke and still be a girl's name. And actually, those two, my dad was a law enforcement officer in Santa Maria mostly, but every day I come home, they ask me the same questions I asked him. "How many people did you arrest, Dad?" And, you know, I know I can't come home saying none. That's just unacceptable. Because every time I come home, they're like, "Well, Dad, you've been there for 12 hours. Like, what you been doing?" And so, but then again, if I arrest one person, they want two. If they want two, it never ends. When I tuck them in at night, sometimes Mark prays for 100 arrests. It's a very, it's a, it's a lot of pressure, but then again, it's kind of the circle of life sort of thing, because that's the same sort of thing I asked, you know, I sort of did to my dad, and it's kind of the legacy I'm trying to live up to and kind of pass on. So, anyway, thank you.
Such a humble man. And you know what? He does his job with compassion. So Officer Rittering, we want to thank and acknowledge you for your hard work. And this MAD award in part reads, "In honor of your outstanding contribution to help stop the crime of DUI," presented by MAD. And we just honor what you do and what our police department does in terms of DUI to keep our community safe. Thank you very much.
Why don't we join for a picture?
All right, to our two chiefs, thanks for bringing those two recognitions and introductions forward. Matt, welcome again, and all our police officers, thanks for all you do. And with that, that concludes our recognition, but as always, thanks very much, be safe out there. Moving on, next item, closed session report. At this point, we have no closed session item to report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mayor, Council Members' Reports and Announcements. And I'll start off with a couple and then turn it over to my colleagues. First, I did want to mention Tom Prowse. It was great that Chief Knuckles told the story behind Tom. You know, he is a little private and humble and kind of slipped out in his own way, but I think it'd be great to be able to recognize Tom. Thanks for all his service. And if you're out there, Tom, listening, which I hope you're not, being retired, you know, you're probably doing something else, but Tom, thanks for all your years of service, both in the public sector and for the city of Morro Bay, just want to say that. And then, next on my list, happy birthday, Matt. Matt had a significant birthday yesterday, so I think we need to say happy birthday to Matt. And then, want to say thanks again to Craig. So this is a little recognition for me tonight, I don't really get to, I don't really do too much of this, but, so, you know, Craig hasn't been here very long. I just want to say thanks, Craig, for all your service. We've been glad to have you and saying thanks for all the work you've done. And we understand you're going to be moving on to another position for all the right reasons, so we're glad for that, sad to see you go, but just wanted to say thanks. It's been great having you, and I just want to say thanks for all you brought to the city and within the department and just overall, so I just want to say thanks for that.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's honestly been a pleasure, significantly shorter than I would have envisioned my career here at Morro Bay. But I am very optimistic about the future of Morro Bay. You've got a great bunch here, great council, everyone's very cordial, is working together to kind of row in the same direction. So hopefully at some point in the future, I can come back, so we'll see.
Absolutely, we'd welcome you, we'd welcome you. All right, thanks very much. And then, an announcement, I just wanted to ask Scott, a little announcement on the sign ordinance. Can you give us an update on the sign ordinance and the workshop that might have just transpired? Maybe you can help us with that.
Yeah, we had a sign ordinance workshop. So the city's been working on updating its sign ordinance, starting in the 2010, 2011 area, maybe even before that. And it went through several iterations, and before I started working here, had gone around to the various, we created four sign districts and gone around on North Maine, Quintana, downtown, and then on the Barcadero. And they'd gone around back in 2012, 2013, and met with all those sign district areas for the updated sign ordinance. Fast forward to current times, and we were in the process of continuing engagement with the commercial community, and Supreme Court decision came down to remove our ability to regulate signage-based, content-based signage. And so we had to go back and rework the entire ordinance, basically about a third, two-thirds of it were included policies that were content-based, and so we had to go through and rework all of those. And we sat down, myself, one of our planning interns, Ryan, your Chair of your Planning Commission, Bob Teft, and reworked all of it, thought we did a great job, sent it off to the city attorney's office, and we got 94 comments back. So went through, made those changes, and then put some more examples of things into the sign ordinance, so there was more pictures and things to see what was, so we could depict what was allowed and what wasn't. And then, so we are scheduling those sign district meetings again. We had, the last one was last week, and we met with the, it was scheduled for the North Maine and Quintana areas. We only had a couple of folks show up, but we went through the process of describing what those changes were. And we have another sign ordinance forum at 9:00 on the 24th in this building to go over the downtown and waterfront areas. We will be sending out notices. I think they were working on sending them out yesterday to all of the business owners in those two sign district areas. And then staff will be also making the rounds with flyers to hand out to business owners in those areas as well, see if we can't get a little more participation. Erica Crawford with the chambers also said she'd do, give us a little plug on some of the email blasts they send out for the workshops. She's already done it once, but said she's continued to do that, so we're hoping to get a little bit better turnout there. And when we're done with that, we'll be maybe making changes, maybe not, depending on what comes out of those workshops, and then moving it forward to Planning Commission. And then City Council for, and then to plug it into the ongoing general plan, LCP and zoning code update.
All right. Thanks, Scott, for that update. And I have one final comment. There's an organization that's been around for a while, and I just want to recognize Kurt Beebe, a gentleman, longtime resident of Morro Bay, started the Black Hill Gang, and that's still around. They do a lot of work on Black Hills specifically, Montana Dero. He moved down to Santa Monica to be with his grandkids and family down there, and comes up and visits from time to time. And I just wanted to pay him hello and thanks for all his work and for founding an organization that has really helped out the community, and just wish him and his family the best. So those are my comments, and I'll turn it over to Red.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our super-moral-based citizens, and that's Dawn Beatty, for the many ways that she contributes to our community. Dawn leads an organization of, excuse me, homeowners in the Cloisters, who have worked out a cooperative relationship with city staff to keep the Cloisters Park maintained. And Dawn specifically took on a project in 2014 to replace interpretive panels in the Cloisters. They were faded and outdated, and over the space of a year and a half, she developed new panels, new versions with the original text and with updated photographs, images, and graphics. And she also added a new panel, Birds of the Cloisters Pond. So thank you, Dawn, for all of the things that you do to help our community. This coming Saturday, I'm going to do office hours at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00, and then I'll follow that up with a business walk. Last month, during my office hours, I heard mainly concerns about appealing to Coastal Commission staff for our WRF location, and I look forward to hearing a report tonight on that. So that's all I have.
Great, Matt. John?
Good evening. Welcome back after at least one meeting being off. Thanks to many of you who came out to the town hall meeting that I had about three weeks ago. We had about 90 people. The intent was to cover about six or seven items, and we got stuck on one. I guess you can guess what that might be. We talked about the wastewater treatment facility and the WRF in great length, and we also went through a discussion of the 218 process and what that involved, and tried to help educate with regard to that process and how it all works. Thanks to so many of you that did come out, sent emails afterwards, appreciate that. It's always a good lively exchange, and so quarterly, look for announcements. I'm just very grateful for those of you that do show up and have wonderful questions and can give me information on concerns that you have with regard to the city. Second, I do represent the city on a county board, that is the Air Quality Board. We are in the process now of recruiting a new CEO for that organization. I'm on the subcommittee for selection. We have a great opportunity. We've had a director that has been there for over 20 years and had done a fantastic job, and we have a pool of candidates that are national and very well-qualified. And so we are dealing with a significant issue, believe it or not, with regards to air quality in this county. You don't live in the part of the county where that's a concern, but if you're down on South County area and the Napa Basin, you know that at times, there are days when you shouldn't be there breathing that air. So there's a significant effort to try to help mitigate that, and I think with new direction, new leadership, hopefully we'll be able to move that forward more quickly here. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Marla?
Yeah, the first item I had on my list here was to thank Craig, and I realize that the mayor has already done that, so I will just reiterate my thanks and say we're going to miss Craig, and we hope he comes back someday. The second announcement I wanted to make is to just let everybody know to save the date, September 16th, the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance is going to kick off their campaign to raise money for Cerito Peak. And so mark your calendars, and we will give you more updates as the date comes closer. Thanks.
All right, Marla, thank you. And with that, that'll conclude announcements. And opening up our public comment, we open up with a business spot, and Linda Fidel has been invited to speak on behalf of the Monday Night Dinner Report. Welcome, Linda.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to thank people. First of all, I would like to thank the City Council for making the community dinners possible by waiving the rent for Veterans Hall on Monday nights when we have the dinners. If we had to pay rent, we simply couldn't have the dinners here on Monday night. So thank you, City Council, for that step. It helps a lot. We started January 6th of 2014. We have now served, as of last night, 188 community dinners. As of last night, we have served 11,606 guests. We are currently getting between 90 and 100 people every dinner. What I want to talk about tonight is what the groups do that supply the dinners. There are six of them. Each of these groups generates a menu, buys the ingredients, prepares the food, brings it hot to Vets Hall, serves it, and then helps clean up at the end of the evening. We think that the groups are spending between $200 and $250 a night, probably, in order to supply a hot dinner to that many people. If they're doing this once a month, that's a commitment of $3,000 on the part of each of six groups. The first Monday of each month is done, the dinner is presented by the Lions Club. They began in April of 2014. Their dinners are organized by Ray and Nancy McKelvey and Chuck Stoll. They served 101 people, a hot dinner that was very lovely here in this room last night. The second Monday, the dinner is supplied by St. Timothy's Catholic Church in cooperation with Dockside Restaurant. Bonnie Jones coordinates those efforts. Bonnie and St. Tim's began serving homeless people in the community over six years ago, hot food. They also are responsible for the donations of paper goods that we receive, so that we have, you know, like plates to put things on. The third Monday of each month, two groups alternate presenting the dinners. One of them is St. Peter's Episcopal by the Sea. Nancy Castle organizes that effort. And St. Peter's, by the way, also supplies our liability insurance, which is a condition of being here. The Methodist Church began alternating with St. Peter's in January of 2015, and that effort is coordinated by Tricia Fisher. The fourth Monday of each month is, the dinner is supplied by the Circle of Friends. Kim Bueller is currently in charge of organizing that effort, although Lana Holiday Richmond and Barbara Ramsdale did it in the past. Circle of Friends has also been serving people in this community for over six years. The fifth Monday, when there is one, and there are four of them each year, as you probably know, is the dinner is supplied by Quota International of Morro Bay. They began doing that on October of 2016. Amanda Cross is the one who organizes that effort. Others over time who have been involved with supplying dinners are Rock Harbor, Giovanni's, the Great American Fish Company, and one lovely evening, we had the Future Farmers of America, 4-H, and The Grange. What I want to say is that the effort that these people are putting forward and the expense that they regularly assume is no small matter. And it's thanks to people like us that people who could use a good hot dinner on Monday nights get one. Thank you.
Linda, thank you. And forgive me, I think I introduced that as a business spot, but that was a presentation, and that's one of the partnerships that the city has that we've joined in on. Linda, thanks for all your work and for all that you do, and all the volunteers, thanks. And with that, the next item on the agenda is public comment, and I have three items, three speakerships for public comment. This is public comment for items not on the agenda, and then we'll move on to public comment for consent, and then the rest of our business items on the agenda. And just wanted to confer with council at this point, we did have a special meeting prior to the city council meeting, starting at 4:00 to 5:30, that was a marijuana workshop, and that's also on the agenda. So we still have some people that were at that workshop that are here. Just wanted to just poll the council and ask about having, moving up our marijuana agenda item up first. We've already done most of the work at the special meeting, and hopefully we should be able to get through that quickly, and then we can move on to Item C1 and C2, which is our WRF items. So just as a course of continuity from our marijuana workshop that we had, or study session, I should say. So just want to just get some, yeah, get some support. Okay, we're good with that. So folks will make a minor adjustment, but we'll get through that. And with that, I'll start with public comment. First one up, Jeff Heller and then Kerrigan Mann.
Jeff Heller, good evening. I think we all know that the city's essential number-one goal is to achieve fiscal and economic sustainability. One of our major cost burdens, expense burdens, is our employees and the benefits that we pay them. I noticed that there are two open positions advertised right now. I'd like to recommend to the council that these not be hired as employees, but rather be hired out on a contract basis. I think over the term that they will be working for the city, it could save hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city if they do not come on as employees. The second comment I wanted to make has to do with the motion made at the July 11th meeting regarding outreach for the public regarding the WRF project. This, from our perspective, is a very... This, from our perspective, is a very critical item that we start the outreach right away. If possible, I'd like to see it agendized tonight. So a report from staff on what the public outreach is going to be would be presented at the next council meeting in two weeks. I think the process is someone makes a motion and you vote or whatever, I'm not sure. But I think the sooner we talk about the public outreach plan, the better this 160-day, or excuse me, 60-day period, 120-day period will progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrigan Mann and then David Nelson.
Carrigan Mann, Morro Bay resident. Good evening, council. Good evening, staff. The deeper I get into this with citizens for affordable living, the more doors that are open, the more I'm seeing. And I'm, I guess I'm generally, generally just horrified at the money being spent everywhere, far and beyond the sewer project, which, I mean, I'm looking at whatever this came from. I don't know where it came from, but it was handed to me and I see, I see the expenditures that are taking place in this small town of 10,000 people. And this is awkward and I, you know, I apologize to the city attorney, but I see in 2014, which I guess this started in April of 2014, in, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, seven, eight months, the charges were between $16,000 and $36,000 a month, equalling $275,000. Okay? I don't think the citizens are aware of what's going on here. We have now, 2015, we're over $400,000 billed with monthly billings of as high as $50,000. What are we doing? Must be quite an hourly. I mean, we must really be busy. Because we get into 2016, as far as I go here on this sheet, is up to May 31st, 2016. In six months, we are just shy of $300,000 billing by the city attorney. What's that all about? Now I move on to Nunley and the rest of the gang and I look at these charges. This is out of control. This is irresponsible. Yes, we've put a pause on the sewer project. There's no question about that. How you, any of you, could even vaguely entertain a cost of $167 million, which we all know it would be more. And we all know it's going to be well over $200. It's absurd. And how can you, how can we even be discussing this? How can, how could that have gotten this far after all of these years? Not to be believed. We need a cookie cutter. We need, the door to Cayucus is by no means closed, which other people will bring that up later. I don't know what the motive is. I asked it once. I was faced with blank faces. I'm still faced with blank faces. Nobody knows the motive. Yes, I heard the bell.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
I heard the bell.
Yep.
Finally, $711,000, four to one vote to see what plumbing is broken, what needs fixed, what needs replacing. I can't.
Carrigan, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
I'm wrapping it up. This is my last.
There you go.
Sentence, okay? We have engineers that can do this for a lot less than $711,000. There we are. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrigan. David Nelson?
Hi, David Nelson. Assistant in Morro Bay. We don't have any agendas back there. I came in early and there was no agendas. I think it's, you know, polite to have an agenda out there so people can sign up. I don't know. This isn't the first time either. So anyway, I did, I did look over the agenda, so I kind of know what's going on. But yeah, I'm going along with Carrigan here. You know, I read the staff report for the thing that's coming up, for the sewer review. And what's missing there is, you know, we're reading in a newspaper about EPA wanting to write us a check for $82 million at really low interest, which is a great idea. But you know, the caveat to that is that we need to come up with an innovative plan. Now, you know, I see we're going out for, you know, bids on, you know, on people that want to build this for us, but why don't we get some ideas together to throw with all the numbers that we've paid $10 million for in the last six years and go out there and find something innovative that's going to fit the EPA doctrine? Where we're going now, I mean, the last time I was at a meeting in July, we were talking about second theory again. It's like going in a top here. We should got it, we need to get focused. I mean, I read again today that, in a letter that was sent to the council, that we're in talks with Cayucus again. I mean, if this is a fact, why don't you tell us and why don't we stop doing what we're doing? I mean, we spent millions of dollars looking for sites. They have the site. Toro Creek, Toro Creek site is a great site, period. It's as good as anything we've looked at. It's already been looked at for permits and everything. I mean, they can't afford, the truth is, they can't afford to build their own plant and neither can we. And now there's just stubbornness going on between, and it looks like it's starting to melt, thank God. I mean, let's get logical here. Let's take their FDA loan and our $82 million loan and do something innovative. So let's get toilet to tap. Let's go all the way. It's out there. People are doing it. We've been doing it up in space for 40 years. We know how to do this. Just go do it. I mean, just get the money and do it.
Thanks, David. Erica Crawford?
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Erica Crawford, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Just back from a really positive experience up in Sacramento early last week for the Western Association of Chamber Executives Academy. So I'm in this academy program. I'm with a cohort. We go through it for three years, learning from industry professionals all over the western United States, from Texas all the way up to the Pacific Northwest. We, just a couple of announcements from what we're up to at the chamber. Our board, who I should thank publicly for investing in professional development, I think that's really a positive for us. So we are going to be touring the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you to Joe Mueller for setting that up next Monday. Get some experience walking through that. Next Wednesday, 8:16, we'll be doing our second employer roundtable with Questa College. So this is an effort to talk about skills and how skills are related with the jobs and hospitality that we have and what kind of programs Questa has and what kind of students they have, that what programs could be customized for the employer needs in Morro Bay. So we had our first meeting. Red Davis was in attendance, probably 15 people employers were there. Really dynamic, great discussion. Matthew Green and his colleagues are going to come back with some ideas and proposals for how they could actually become more involved and invested in Morro Bay's hospitality community. And then we are doing a chamber mixer and that's on August 30th. That is going to be with Foster's Freeze and Jim's Automotive, the piney way. It should be really great ice cream end of summer. And of course, the avocado margarita festival is coming up. Look out. It's coming, I think we're about 30 days out. Saturday, September the 9th, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'll be going around with a neighbor to neighbor plan for all of our businesses that are affected on the Embarcadero, talking about parking restrictions and street closures and things like that, making sure that they are very aware of what we're up to. And we also are very aware that we bring a lot of people to the community who are coming from out of the area and we want them to not just enjoy the festival, but to enjoy everything. So we produce a festival guide. It's eight pages. It's produced in a quantity of 10,000 and delivered out via newspapers to King City, Atascadero, Paso Robles. And then we have some that are here in Morro Bay as well through Atascadero News. So on the back page, we are dedicating that to listings for local Morro Bay businesses to try and get people into their brick and mortar stores and have that affect them as well. So those opportunities are on the table. Just contact the chamber. Anybody's welcome for businesses. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Erica. Thank you. That concludes the speaker slips for public comment. Ken, I see the arm. I don't see a speaker slip. Come on up.
Thank you, folks. Ken Vestrapal, resident of Morro Bay. A couple of things. First of all, congratulations to Officer Luke Rettering, a wonderful officer.
He was fun.
A lot of fun to work with, a great family person, and I know he's going to be with us for a while. The second one is that I know you're all aware of the North Main Street off ramp where all the wood chips are being dropped. It started out to be really great for people to be able to come and pick up some stuff. Now it's turned into a trash pile and it's getting, every week, there's something else dropped out there. So hopefully you will be able to take care of that. I think Rob might have something in the works, so if we can have a little report on that. It's a shame that that happened. Now, a good story. On Saturday, as most of you know, I'm a volunteer with the Morro Bay Police Department. And on Saturday morning, we had a call of a young lady who lost a wallet out in North Morro Bay with considerable amount of cash in it. So later around in the afternoon, I was dispatched down to the harbor department where a person had turned in the wallet. Lo and behold, we get it back. All of the money is intact. This is a young lady who works very, very hard. And again, it was considerable amount of money. I don't know whether the person wants to be recognized with that, but I would like to say thank you ever so much for a citizen who turned that in. And it's not uncommon that some of that stuff does happen. Our wallets are turned in to the police department with the cash in it and the driver's licenses and the cards and et cetera. And also cell phones are turned in. So congratulations to that person. To give you a little hint, this person has wrote quite a few columns for the city of Morro Bay. Have a good meeting and thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Thanks for the recognition. All right, with that, good way to end a public comment. We'll conclude public comment, bring it back to council. And as far as, there was some public comment about some of the, this item, the C1 and C2 item will come up later. So I think probably when we go over that, we can respond to some of the billing questions that were coming out unless there's any other things from council.
I was just curious what the gentleman was, what piece of paper he had.
I think that was the one out of the item C2?
I don't know. It didn't look like it. I was wondering if he might give it to.
Deliver it to Craig? Yeah.
Yeah, just so we could see what it is that he was reading from.
Could you give it to Craig? Carrigan? Thanks. Thank you. And that's out of the C2 staff report? Is that out of the staff report?
No, I think.
I can tell what it is. The city finance director gave it to me in the meeting with the candidates.
Okay, great.
The finance director for the city.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
I don't need that.
Thanks.
Number one of them.
Okay. All right. And with that, anything else from council to my right or to my left? Seeing none. All right, we'll move on to consent. Any items on consent to poll from council?
I just want to make a minor correction to item A5. Can I do that without pulling it?
Sure, I think so.
Okay. Just on the last page, it says the next scheduled meeting, and it should read August 8th, 2017, not May 23rd.
Okay.
Just wanted you to know I even read your minutes. And then also, I think I need to recuse myself from voting on item A7. It's that, this is the contract or lease agreement with the Historical Society and he, the president is my significant other. And even though there is no direct conflict, since he's a volunteer and doesn't get paid, I certainly wouldn't want an appearance of a conflict of interest. So I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, so unless there's anything else on consent, well, we can take a motion to pull or to approve all items on consent instead of A7 and then you can recuse yourself and we'll do that. Is there any other items to poll on consent? Seeing none, I take a motion to approve all items on consent with the exception of item A7.
So moved.
Second. And with the correction on, as amended to A5? Approved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Mr. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Then motion carries 5-0. And then A7, if you just want to recuse yourself, we'll go ahead and go through that. Thanks, Marlaus. I take a motion to approve item A7. Second. Motion by Mr. Makewetzky, second by Mr. Heding. Any discussion? None, all in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? None, motion carries 4-0. Ms. McPherson abstained or recused, rather? Okay, Marlaus. All right, cool. And then we can get on to, so the, as discussed, we looked like we were, we had consensus to go ahead and move to item C3, which is the review of Marijuana Council Subcommittee recommendations and considerations and the direction for future local marijuana regulations. The presentation that was conducted at our special meeting, Chris, if you could just kind of summarize that and give us direction on where we're going here, we can turn it over to Marlaus and Red, who are subcommittee members, and we can go through perhaps the recommendations and have that discussion.
Thank you, honorable mayor and members of the city council. We had a meeting at 4 o'clock where, of course, we spent an hour and a half going through a number of the different options and reviewing the local control options for the city specifically. And we went through a PowerPoint. This outline here is basically what we talked about. This is page two of the outline of the PowerPoint. We're seeking direction from the city council on public smoking, personal cultivation, commercial operations, and possible taxes and fees. We talked about fiscal impact, discussing state taxes, state grants, and then local financial options, including fees, taxes, and development agreements. We went through the background. The city has been engaged in a robust discussion with both the community and among the council members and then with the council subcommittee on how to move forward. And then topics four and five up here, we talked about the different areas of local control. There's two for personal marijuana use, public marijuana use, smoking regulations, and then personal marijuana cultivation indoor and outdoor. Talked about commercial marijuana use. Recommended timeline to have a second reading by the November 14th meeting, so we'd have an ordinance in place by the end of the year. And then that brings me to number seven, the recommendations where we left off. So I'm going to skip ahead to the council marijuana subcommittee recommendations. And I believe that we warranted for the council to discuss these recommendations and then to consider taking some action on a motion for an ordinance to be developed or to have another community workshop, whatever would be the pleasure of the council. So I'll turn it back to the mayor and we have the different options here. We could start on page 11 with public use smoking regulations. And I could elaborate further if the mayor would like me to.
That's great. We do have some speaker slip cards. I know it's, there's some redundancy and spoke to some of the speakers that I have speaker slips for that already spoke at our, for public comment at the study session, but I do have some speaker slips for that. Just want to get through some of those unless there's any particular questions at this point. I just open up for public comment first. Okay, all right. So Adam Pentritz, and Adam, I know we've already gone through this, so you know, if there's something new, that'd be welcomed and thank you, appreciate your comments.
I'll keep it brief, I promise. And thank you for your time. My name is Adam Pentritz. I'm a resident of Marina and director of government and community relations for EthnoBotanica. And I just wanted to add on to what was discussed in the study session regarding adult use dispensaries. And particularly given that one of the city's goals for the coming years is fiscal stability, I would urge you to, on top of the needs of patients and that many patients are preferring to go to the adult use market, I would urge you to consider that the potential for revenues, both for the cannabis businesses and therefore also for the city, is going to be much higher with adult use dispensaries. So I urge you to consider permitting those. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Keith? Tony Keith? I don't see, okay, nobody for, and then Cynthia Gonzalez. Cynthia?
Thank you, Ken, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Cynthia Gonzalez with Elite Care California. And I know I spoke earlier, but I can't enforce this enough or share with you or how passionate we are about this industry. When I look around a room, much like we have here in Morro Bay and like we've seen in all the cities, that we have been personally being activists and helping to provide educational platforms so that business decision makers like yourself can make an extremely informed decision on how it could impact your constituency positively or negatively. And we can assure you that with, with a good. And we can assure you that with a good basis of discussion, you see the reasons why those of us have chosen this endeavor. We came from corporate America. Marketing research was our background. We worked with a lot of medical practitioners. We came from the Bay Area. And our goal to come here was actually to help to introduce this concept in a fair and impartial, and more importantly, provide some safe access and information so that bodies of government like yourself could make this decision. We strongly support the need for such, as again, when I take a look at the canvas of this room, the patients that we see, that we do care for, the average age bracket is becoming 65-plus, and the level of cancer patients that are around this area that are looking for maybe just another method to make them comfortable and healthier so that they can perhaps continue to take in their western medicines, or in some cases, just to be able to provide their last goodbyes and take care of those final recommendations with their family and business practices and so forth. Again, it is a very, very important decision that you're making, but I can honestly tell you, there is a lot of great products out there that are safe. The regulatory, the state is going to make sure that everything that does take place for anyone's usage coming forward January 1st, 2018, is going to make sure that it's going to be as safe as anything that's in your medicine chest today. So with that said, we certainly encourage you to vote with your conscience, and you would certainly be helping a larger portion of the constituency in a very, very positive and healthy manner. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia. Next is Tammy Paluso, and then David Nelson.
Hi, thank you. My name's Tammy Paluso, and I am 2 with Elite Care California. A couple of things were brought up earlier in the meeting today, and I know we're all not going to be happy with the decisions that you all make. There are a lot of tough decisions and numbers of storefronts. Everybody wants what they want. But in Morro Bay with 10,000 people, you don't need more than two dispensaries to start. So I know I'm probably getting some dirty looks behind me because I'm saying that, but I don't see a need for more than two. And I say that because if you open up more than two, some of those are going to close because there's not going to be enough business for them. So I would urge you to start with a small number with the population you have here. We're not San Francisco, we're not Oakland, we're not bigger cities. The other thing is, I would urge you not to tie delivery to a storefront. The state's not doing it. You shouldn't because most likely, if you tie that to a storefront, you're still going to have all the deliveries running regardless of what you say or what you put in your ordinance. So those will probably still be running if you do that. And the other thing is, please, 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 don't put everybody in the industrial zone like they're doing in Grover Beach. Think about the residents, the sick patients that are going to have to come to those places. They're not going to be comfortable going to an industrial area. We removed ourselves from the application process because of that. Our patients all told us they would not come to the industrial area. Thank you.
Thank you. David Nelson? That's all the speaker slips that I have for this item.
Hi, David Nelson. I've read over the police memo that was out today, and you know, for the most part, I agree with it. I am against number 2 here. Cultivation outside, come on, you're forcing people to grow this stuff inside. It's a weed. You know, I'm sorry, they grow it all over Morro Bay now. I don't know if anybody realizes that, but most of it's outside, and I don't see a problem with that. And to limit it to inside growth and then use a template that somebody sent in to say it's going to cost you $2,200 to set up a safe grow room, which who wants to grow pot in their house? I guess there's a few people, but you know, for the most part, it's just a weed. I mean, I hate jasmine. My throat closes when I'm around jasmine, but I don't tell my neighbors to rip out their jasmine. I just breathe lightly when I'm around it. This is a community, you know? This free-for-madness stuff has to go away. I mean, it's proven that this has just been a big political game to put people in prison and to, you know, control people. Now, we're over this. I mean, there's science that says this stuff is good. You know, I had spinal surgery. I didn't have to do opiates, you know, and I like that. And I have a salve that I can put on my body that's made with this stuff, and it stops my pain. I like this stuff. And so, you know, to over-regulate it and victimize the people, you're talking about putting a permit for people who deliver it. Well, that's kind of silly. If the guy that's, the head guy is paying all his taxes and paying permits, why does a deliverer need to have a permit and get charged a fee? Charge the guy who has a store a fee. You know, that's like telling a waitress she has to pay 4% back from her tip, you know? It's just not done. And this industry is being victimized. I mean, it's being looked at even worse than cigarettes and tobacco, I mean, as far as taxes go. I mean, nobody's thinking anything about the patients that have to use this, and it's a weed. Like I say, it could be produced, and if everybody was producing it, they probably would be giving it to their friends, and it would collapse the market anyway. So it's just silliness that we're chasing this around for four years, and this is all the further we are, you know? It's not right. And I think we should go full ahead, and I think outside cultivation needs to be in there.
Thanks. Tony Keith is back. Okay, thanks, Tony. And then Tabitha Ozaki?
Thank you. My name is Tony Keith, and I'm the CEO of Green Road. And we provide consulting services to the cannabis industry with architecture, planning, and permitting. And so the point that I'd like to talk to you about tonight is not about whether or how much or where. You're going to be going through a lot of discussion on that, but I think from the standpoint of, this is an economic development tool and not the taxes that you'll be receiving from that. Because every one of these businesses that wants to open and be treated like any other business wants to come to your community. You attract business to be your community, to be a diverse business profile, and this could add to that diversification. Every legal cannabis business requires hired licensed professionals, either architects, contractors, and that means that carpenters and electricians and all sorts of other folks that live in this community, whether or not they are in support of cannabis, have some method of being compensated and working in this industry. And so there's a lot of empty storefronts, there are empty industrial spaces that could all be filled with this. So take that into consideration as you're considering everything else that you're looking at. Thank you.
Thanks. Tabitha Ozaki, and then Maria or Marie Roth? That's the final speaker slip I have. Pull your microphone down, please, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Tabitha, and I am the President of Highway 1 Organics Medical Delivery Service here in San Luis Obispo County. And my concern today for this public address is--
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Hi.
Sorry, thanks.
Yes. My concern is pediatrics and providing non-psychoactive medicine to younger patients here, as well as serving people with chronic ailments that are unable to leave the home with delivery Of course, I'd love to have the opportunity to host a brick and mortar, but I do plan to continue delivering, and I'd love to address the people that are unable to get medicine legally for people that are dealing with cannabis or, excuse me, cancer and who are younger. I'd also like to address that I'd like to have a space to provide a program that is also alternative and holistic, which is yoga, ganja yoga, which is offered in Slow and Cambria currently, but we'd love to have an opportunity to have a place here in Morro Bay to have ganja yoga. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Roth? That's the final speaker slip that I have. I hope I got your last name correct.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
It's Marie Roth.
Okay, good.
And I am the President of the San Luis Obispo County Cannabis Business Association. Because that's such a mouthful, we like to call it Slow CCBA. This group formed because we saw what was coming, like a freight train to San Luis Obispo County. And what are, in addition to what the previous speakers have alluded to, we are here to kind of be the umbrella resource for the businesses, the policymakers, and as well, the consumers. So to answer some of the specific questions that you're asking today on your agenda, my suggestion would be to not delay in discussing and implementing taxes and fees. Get that on your ballot, and so that, that's one thing that you'll need to have done in order to be able to at least recoup some of that revenue. And I also would suggest you not delay in cultivating a relationship with a brick and mortar dispensary here in Morro Bay, as well as continue to nurture the mobile dispensaries that are going to be able to operate independently with a separate business, with a separate license type that is special to them. And, you know, I've interviewed hundreds of people in the last year and a half since I walked into this space. My motivation was compassion. I know what a beneficial medicinal component that this herb has for people, and I also am very familiar with the stigma and the misinterpretations, obviously, that go along with this industry. I know the people that are cultivating and have been cultivating and operate these businesses, and they do it with compassion and love. And that is something that cannot be replaced with, you know, a corporate entity. So because our community is so special and very unique and very community-oriented, I would highly, highly suggest nurturing these indigenous businesses that have been here and have been serving the local community. Your local community is used to them, they trust them. It is a huge component to how these businesses operate is trust. So far, there's a huge learning curve. It's all been very steep. I feel like I'm sliding down a snowbank every single day, but we can do this together. Another interesting component to the Slow CCBA is the interest of professional business services that definitely see the need that this industry has for that representation. They need CPAs, they need attorneys, they need bookkeepers, they need marketing, they need representation in a professional sense. So we have that, we can bring it all together. It's like bringing a big giant mosh pot of good stuff together, but--
And I have to ask you to conclude.
Yes, and that is the conclusion.
Okay, good.
Thank you for having this discussion today.
All right, Marie, thank you. I don't have any more speaker slips, so I'm just kind of panning the audience out there. I'm going to close public comment, close public comment, and bring it back to council. Thanks. And so we have the list of recommendations that we started with during the special meeting and that we can pick up from there. So looking at Red and Marlese and maybe Chris, how we can just go ahead and go one by one through the recommendations, and maybe Red and Marlese can kind of lead us off in the discussion since they were the subcommittee members. And then council could have those discussions, and you know, with staff assistance, we'll, you know, coordinate any interpretation or any kind of additional conversations that are needed.
I would like to just start out by thanking the staff for helping the subcommittee to such a great extent, to Connie and Chris and Marty and the police department and Craig and Scott and the fire chief. Everyone was involved, and everyone was very helpful. And I think as a subcommittee, we tried to come up with a balanced approach that took into consideration all of the various public safety concerns, but also paid attention to what the citizens have told us in the public workshops, the fact that the citizens in Morro Bay supported recreational use by 67%. So, and we know that there's delivery services that are currently operating, and there's many people benefiting from medical marijuana. So we started with that as our goal, I think, and so we can now go through the recommendations.
Okay, great.
Opening remarks.
Yeah. Going to look back and forth, and you guys kind of coordinate the tag team on that?
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't done this as a tag team yet, so.
Okay. All right, so first one up is public use and smoking regulation. And just looking at your recommendations there, you know, you all want to lead us off through that, and we can have that discussion.
Well, we already have a prohibition against smoking in public, and I would turn to Chris to talk about if we have any needs to strengthen that ordinance, you should tell us what we need to do there.
Sure, thank you. So in the current secondhand smoking ordinance, there are exceptions to smoking in public places, and it appears to me that the last exception in the ordinance, which refers to you or somebody can smoke in a public place if they reasonably don't think somebody's going to basically be there that isn't smoking as well, it's allowed. The council might want to consider tightening that up. Otherwise, the ordinance in general prohibits smoking in public places and has a couple of exceptions, as mentioned in the workshop earlier at 4. Those exceptions include private residences, and also, if it's not a private residence, then if you set up what's called a smoking outpost at, say, a private party, then the smoking could be allowed.
Okay.
Okay. Any council discussion on the first one of the public use and smoking regulations? John?
So again, thank you to the subcommittee, and thank you, audience, for your comments. Chris, thank you for your insights. With regard to the smoking prohibitions, I would echo the concept of using the existing regulations that we have for smoking in general. What I would like to see is this tightened up so that the issue of secondhand smoke infiltrating pediatric patients, or I should say, young people in general and/or elderly at risk is a concern medically with regard to this, given the components of some of the smoke. And so if some kind of tightening, and I don't know exactly what that would look like, but to prevent the exposure significantly in public places and/or other places that may not be covered by the ordinance could be added, that would be something that I would be behind and could be supportive of. I do think the, again, the existing smoking regulations are quite good and just need to be tweaked a bit, so to speak. Tweak, I should probably use that word. Slightly to make changes in that to protect the public at large.
Okay, any other comments on the smoking regulations?
The only thing I would add is that we add vaping to the ordinance. I just returned from Oregon, and many of their no-smoking signs now specifically mention vaping. And I think that should be in there as well as, and obviously, this will include smoking marijuana.
Okay. Anything else from the left? So basically, I'm just following the record and what we've discussed previously and looking at the, any other comments? Marty, did you have something?
I was going to ask Chris if you wanted a motion on each item and the vote by the council would be the easiest way to go. So one by one, committee recommendation, so that would be the first motion.
Yeah, we could do this one by one and just make sure, I'm writing notes as well, and you know, if you want to do a motion one by one, we can do that, or just you can follow along and take the notes and make a motion at the end, whichever's simpler.
Whatever be the pleasure of the council, we could do one motion with the different recommendations, or we could do separate ones. It might be easier just to go through them and have one motion at the end.
Okay.
But something to consider also is the direction for, will staff and city attorney's office bring back an ordinance that best fits the recommendation for consideration, or do we want to do a workshop before that happens?
We could probably discuss that towards the end. We'll get through the list and then figure out how to do that, and we can wrap that up.
Okay, right.
And Chief Fallon also had a suggestion or a comment to make.
Yes, just a suggestion on the public smoking, so that it doesn't conflict with proximity to schools, churches, and that type of thing. I would suggest that we address that particular issue so that we don't have a conflict, for instance, with a restaurant that may be in proximity to a school, and that we consider those types of issues as we-- those types of issues as we look at the public smoking aspect of this.
Okay. So, I would just, as we take all these notes, I'm writing that down too, so we'll incorporate the notes that, and the comments that we're all adding. Chief, thank you for that. And then we'll, so based on the way we're going through this from the smoking regulation, we're looking at the list that we have up there, maintain the current strict local smoking prohibitions. We're talking about tightening these up, tighten it up a little bit for particular health patients per council member headings, comments, add vaping, and then, as the chief made, said, any conflict between churches, schools, and restaurants. And I think we can cover that. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to personal cultivation outdoor. And the recommendation here is to prohibit. And any discussion on that?
Well, I would say that I've changed my mind since I made the recommend, participated in the subcommittee meeting and changed my mind. And partly, it was a fact of kind of misunderstanding the exact language of Prop 64, which clearly states that they may grow it indoors or outdoors. And I think if we had appropriate ways to control that and to regulate that, that would probably be all right. And I know that some other communities are already allowing outdoor cultivation as long as it's screened from the public. And the key is that nobody can grow more than six plants indoors or out, and/or outdoors for their personal use. And I think that's the important thing. And I think it's important that then we kind of know who those people are through regulations. So, I would, I'm changing my opinion.
Okay. John?
Sure. I would support outdoor as well cultivation. And the rationale for that is I think indoor uses a lot of unnecessary resources that outdoor cultivation may not. I'm not necessarily against indoor cultivation, but I do think it's resource-intensive. Secondarily, I would like to see the ordinance that's developed include appropriate screening from public view, especially, once again, I think growth in proximity to at-risk populations like schools, churches, those areas, I think comes into play here too. So, I think the ordinance should include something that would limit cultivation within proximity or close proximity to those types of entities. And then, security is an issue when you have family and young ones around and mom or dad are cultivating. Somehow, the local reg, I believe, needs to protect wayward young people that just might, you know, find plants or what have you. So, some kind of security language in there to mitigate as much as possible the inadvertent exposure by young people or at-risk, again, populations.
Okay. Matt?
I too would agree in terms of Marla's good point, it's indoor and outdoor cultivation. One thing I think we could consider, six plants, that's a lot to grow outside. So, you maybe perhaps a mixture, you know, two plants up mean, for granted, two plants, six in total, but no more than two outside. I don't know if that would be worthy. Everything else said, I agree with.
Great, Matt, thanks. Red?
I agree.
Okay. I would, as far as supporting outdoor, I'm not in support of the outdoor, but I would support it under the conditions that we limit the number. And I think there's one conversation we had where, actually, I think there's, we can be susceptible to a lot of conflict, neighborhood conflict. So, I think we need to be careful with this. So, limiting the number, Matt, I think is what that number is. So, I guess at this point, we want to limit the number and would ask, you know, staff to do a little research and see what that might be. And then, you know, we can discuss that. The other part is, you know, I think if there's conflict, then perhaps that, you know, in a neighborhood, if there is conflict with neighborhood, maybe that needs to be permitted. And if it is in conflict with the neighborhood, then it shouldn't be allowed. And something of that, and Marty, I look to you because I think we, there was something, another city that did something like that, but you might be familiar with. So, you might be familiar with what I'm talking about.
We talked about a permit process involved agreement by neighboring property owners, so we can look at that.
Okay, thanks.
And I would think that we should also get a permit if they're going to have outdoor grows. I think we want to know who is growing marijuana in Morro Bay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one comment to add is the state law right now requires that if you're growing it outdoors, it must be in a locked place and not visible by normal unaided vision from a public place. So, the city could certainly add to those restrictions, but that's present.
Sounds great, thanks. Anything else on personal cultivation outdoor? Okay, next one is personal cultivation indoor. What we have up there is regulate as follows, and that, any comments on what we have listed so far? And I'll just keep going from right to left, and Marla's?
Okay. Well, when we discussed this, the subcommittee and the staff meeting, my concern, which I raised, is that we don't make it so onerous that we basically discourage people from seeking a permit. So, I think it really has to be reasonable, and I think we cannot have multiple inspections. We want to make sure that they actually do apply for a permit, and we can't charge a lot of money for it. So, it's got to be easy, and it's like a simple one-time inspection to make sure they're complying with any safety and health regulations. So, that's my only concern about it.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I would, I would agree with everything that has been said. I would want to see written into the ordinance, the issues that have been mentioned, odor controls, security requirements, electrical use regulations, permission if the building is owned by a landlord and you're lessy, and the requirement for, again, a permit and an inspection to be determined by our experts as to how often that should be. Could be a one-timer, as far as I'm concerned. And that they're not transferable. I think, I don't think it's a good idea personally that somebody leaves and tries to transfer a permit, so I'd like to see it non-transferable as well. And again, protect the safety of young people and high-risk individuals in the home.
Okay, thanks. Matt?
My only comment on number three is if we can get consensus on allowing some sort of outdoor cultivation, we put a lot of the various caveats from number three into number two.
Okay, can you explain that? I just want to understand.
John just went over a number of them, but this A through F under number three, if we can, if we run, if we come up with allowing, say, for instance, two plants to grow outside, you still have to apply for your permit, and you still have to do it in a health, with health and safety in mind, because we don't want you necessarily using the best fertilizers known to the world that goes into our water system, so, or draining into the ocean. So, I would just like some of those same ideas to restrict the control and make sure that they're doing it in a manageable and ethical way.
Okay. Red?
I agree.
Okay. I'll agree with where we are on indoor. I did make some comments on just the concern over the indoor use. And Chris, I think you responded to that as far as, you know, whether or not accessory units or garage units or something like that. So, the state, the state law covers that, is that right?
The state law refers to indoor cultivation may occur in personal residence or an accessory unit.
Okay.
And so, if the city wanted to impose regulations on, say, a garage being used for cultivation, that certainly could be reasonably done.
Yeah, I would like to include that unless there's not agreement, but that would be my, my thoughts. Any other comments?
Do we need to add something about a penalty if they don't apply and are caught? I mean, is that reasonable to say there should be some penalty associated with it? If, let's say, their neighbors report them when we find out they have not applied for a permit?
That would be at the discretion of the council. We certainly could put a penalty in the ordinance.
You know, we can, you know, we can start with that. I envision that, you know, we're going to go through this list and we'll come back with a draft. And then, once we go through that draft, we'll be able to vet that out some more.
Okay.
And then, next one we've got is dispensaries. And recommendation here is medical, allow as follows. We've got, well, we've got it right in front of us. So, Marla's, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, we talked about how many to allow, and we really felt that it would be best to start out small, given the size of our population. We obviously have a history of having had one medical marijuana dispensary in Morro Bay, so it's not that unusual. But we felt that we would start small and see what the demand is. And I appreciated the comment that was made and public comment that that seemed reasonable for a city of our size to start with two. And obviously, you have to have reasonable requirements. And we obviously need a process also for how to pick the two. And I would definitely be in favor of, you know, screening them and evaluating them as opposed to any kind of lottery. So, if that needs to be a part of the ordinance, I would definitely support that. I'm not so certain that we still need to impose local regulations on edibles, given the state law. You might want to check and see where they're at on that. And if it looks like it's going to be strong enough, and we know what the intent is, we want to keep it away from people that should not have it, young people, and we don't want it to look like candy and be readily available, then I would be in favor of just saying consistent, packaging consistent with state law. I also think we should seek development agreements with operators. I think we need to do that because, truthfully, this is not going to be a money raiser for Morro Bay, and this is the only way we're going to likely to get money beyond any grants that we might be eligible for. So, I would be in favor of it.
Okay. All right, Marla's, John?
So, I would agree with what Marla's has said. In addition, I was looking at the recommendation with regard to zones, the central business C1 and C2, general commercial districts. And maybe I could, maybe ask Scott to give us a quick idea of what areas of the community that, I'm trying to picture the map in my head, but I should have looked ahead of time. I didn't.
C1 runs down Morro Bay Boulevard, down Main Street in those areas. C2 runs along the north portion of Quintana and portion to the south as well, yeah, those areas.
The T.
Yeah.
We call it the T, thank you.
There you go.
Great. So, yeah, I would add that the dispensaries be limited to those areas, but then again, not in proximity with the at-risk populations that we talked about, similar to the language that involves schools, young people, at-risk populations, et cetera. However, that will be defined, if those are included, that we have a distance allowance for that. That would not allow it within a certain distance, even though it's in the district itself. And then, I was thinking about sizing of the facilities, and I think there should be some limitation, given the size of the community, and some limitation on the square footage allowance for a dispensary. And so, I didn't see any recommendation, but think we should vet that further and determine what that might be. Probably a 100,000-square-foot warehouse in the district is maybe not a good idea, but some limitation that would allow us to be appropriate to the size of the community.
Okay, all right. Matt?
Yes, I'm looking at number four with dispensaries, medical. At first, when we first started this conversation and listening and following, I was somewhat kind of limited in my own thinking, okay, maybe medical. But we had a number of speakers earlier and then tonight in this meeting who made the case for the adult dispensaries. I wonder, as I'm looking at four, and I'm going to jump ahead to five, if we want to limit in this town of this size to two dispensaries, can we say, or are we willing to say that we want to have two dispensaries, be they medical or, and at least one medical, and then perhaps two medical, but at least one of the two dispensaries in total, one of them has to be medical. And if the other one comes in with a good case to be dispensary, then it would be an adult dispensary. The reason why, we're going to, we have a sizable part of the population that is very interested in this, this coming legally to Morro Bay. And so, I'm just going to bring that up instead of just limiting it, so, to just medical. Okay?
All right. Matt? Red?
I'm going to agree, I'm going to agree with Matt about allowing one adult use. But I want to ask about the zoning. Scott, is there any reason to not allow industrial zoning to host dispensary?
Can you give us some examples of industrial so we can picture that, please?
So, well, I think, so our C2 zones are kind of like light industrial-type uses. Those are the, some of the areas along Quintana. Yeah, some of them have a little higher, and then there are also specific industrial zoning designations in that area as well. But our C2 is the more intense type of commercial use and the light, and then it brings in light industrial-type uses. So, some of those areas that you might be thinking of that are industrial, C2 would pick those up. So, I think people think C2 and it's, it's areas in town where there's just storefronts, but that's not the case necessarily. There, you know, there are areas in our, what would be like along that Quintonic Cor that are C2, that are sort of light industrial-esque. You know, we have, you know, auto repair shops and tire stores and things like that in those locations, things that you might associate otherwise with like industrial-type areas, so.
But is there anything about industrial zoning in particular?
I don't think it's incompatible. I think it would be fine. I don't think there's anything between the two, other than I think one of the speakers come up here and say, well, you know, our customers might not want to go there in those areas to shop or patronize those places. I mean, I can't speak to that. All I can say is I could sort of, I guess, understand that depending on where you are at, but we don't really have heavy industrial areas in town, other than, say, like the dinery plant or something like that, or the wastewater treatment plant, that area. We don't really have, you know, sort of that heavy industrial-type zoning in town at this point.
Okay, I guess I would favor widening the ability to locate the shops and not restrict them just to the C1 and C2. But I also want to ask about sizing. John has concerns about building size, but don't we have like zoning regulations already in place that control size of buildings?
I mean, we have floor area, you know, we have sort of floor area, lot coverage limitations in our, in our different zones, commercial, C1, C2, industrial, those types of things. And so, they're limited like any other use would be there, it doesn't treat them differently. If you, if you allow the use in that location, then they can have the square footage that's afforded to any other use that would be allowed in that zone. Yeah, I mean, so we already have some limitations that are based on that, yes.
Okay, and I would favor that as well. So, that's all I have.
So, Red, just to be clear, so you're talking about as far as zoning, what's recommended is the commercial one and two? Is that what you?
I favor expanding zone, the permitted zoning to include C1, C2, and our industrial zones. I favor letting the existing building regulations govern the size of buildings.
Okay.
And I favor allowing adult-use retail dispensary.
You know, I know, I'm looking at the comments from the special meeting we had, and, you know, I don't feel like we have to be all things and cover all of all, you know, all this. I think we could be pretty refined and take this in steps. So, personally, I'm not in favor of a recreational dispensary, but I'm just casting my vote amongst the council. I think allowing two is a good start. It was great to hear some comments about some, from the public on, to reinforce that, you know, from a professional standpoint, why two should be allowed. That question as well. I, you know, I just don't support the recreational part. I, you know, I just don't support the recreational part. I think the medical dispensary is acceptable to me. The, I do have a concern on the C1, C2 industrial. I know it's only two dispensaries. You know, I'm somewhat cautious in the locations of those, you know, on the main streets versus maybe some of the ancillary streets within the commercial district. But for medical, you know, I think that might not be as critical. But for recreational, I would encourage, you know, council to limit, you know, kind of the recreational storefront on our main business corridor and maybe some of the side streets or something like that. Those are my comments there. And I think, this is the spot where I'm, I just want to cover some of my notes and make sure I'm getting some of the comments that I had heard earlier. So, the only other thing was, don't tie deliveries to storefronts. So, we're talking about two dispensaries, but what about if you have a brick-and-mortar dispensary versus a facility that, hey, we're just a building. We don't have a walk-in. We just operate here, and our delivery service runs. So, is that, does that fall in the same category of dispensary? In other words, you have two kind of retail dispensaries, and do we say we allow two dispensaries that are delivery-only? Can you expand on that?
So, the issue in regards to deliveries, I think, at least one of them, is if the city is just silent on deliveries, then the state will be regulating them in regards to, the deliveries are going to need to be associated with a retail outlet, a nonprofit or a microbusiness. The city, however, could say that it's going to allow X number of delivery-only dispensaries. But there's a number of different ways of dealing with delivery, which is a separate function than walk-in retail.
Yeah.
I also wanted to mention the subcommittee, we hadn't discussed microbusiness, but that's something to consider, too. It's come up briefly during the special meeting. Microbusinesses are going to be multi-operational licenses, where they can have a small amount of cultivation, they can do retail, they can do delivery, they can do manufacturing. So, just another option for the council to consider if there is going to be the allowance of a few dispensaries, possibly considering whether they should be also allowed to be a microbusiness.
So, as far as the, a delivery facility versus a retail, and that's the only thing I could think of, it's a walk-in retail. So, from what you're saying, then, unless we call it out, there's going to be no limits. Anybody that wants to come in and have a delivery service, they can say, hey, we've got a business license, we're going to use this building here, and we're only here for delivery, as a warehouse type of thing.
If they want to store the product in the city, the city definitely could regulate that. But if somebody is, for example, going to be delivering cannabis from Grover Beach or from outside of the county, you know, or they're just driving it into the city and delivering it, the city doesn't have to regulate that, you know.
I'm not talking about the person doing the delivery. I'm talking about, it's a warehouse. You know, this is where we operate. We distribute from Morro Bay, and we've got a 10,000 square foot. I'm just making it up.
Oh, sure.
You know, it's a 10,000-foot building, and we operate our deliveries from Morro Bay, whether or not it's serving Morro Bay or Cayucas or San Luis Obispo.
When the state issues a retail license, i.e. a dispensary license, that store can expressly not be open to the public and just do deliveries. So, the city could say, we're going to allow X number of delivery-only dispensaries.
Yeah. So, I would just ask that maybe you bring something in the draft form with an option for that at this point. I don't, you know, I think we can probably work that out.
For delivery-only dispensaries?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, SB 94 clarified that, that they can expressly be delivery-only.
Yeah.
It's number eight on the hit list, so, and there were recommendations, I mean, on your list, here. And there were recommendations.
Chief, you have a comment?
Yes. So, from a public safety perspective, a delivery-only creates a whole set of police problems. So, I would ask that we look at that very closely.
Yeah.
And address that as we go into this.
Okay. So, based on, I would, I guess, if we were to come back with something that would limit delivery-only service, maybe we could have some input from the chief on what we should consider. And maybe under the draft language, we could consider with more discussion whether or not we should limit them or prohibit them, based on input from, you know, staff and the chief. I think that, just having that option when we come back in draft form, I know it's going to be another process, but when we see it in draft form, we'll be able to work it from there.
Sure. We can present a number of different plug-and-place options, and the council can look at the different ones.
So, I just wanted to add, I wanted to echo, because you opened up the other comment when Matt made the comment about adult use. And I wanted to echo what you said. I do not support adult use. My comment was two medical dispensaries when I said I supported that. I do not support adult use in Morro Bay for a number of reasons, and think we should limit it to two medical. That's just my opinion. And secondarily, since we're talking about it, I don't want to, think the city wants to become a Mecca for closed-door mobile dispensaries that are not open-door. And that's just my opinion. We could come back and look at what that might look like.
Yeah.
I agree. It presents a whole number of safety and vetting issues.
So, did we get this, so basically, thanks for following up on that, because I was just, so I just want to make sure we're on two. We kind of talked maybe medical and recreation. I know it's adult use, but I'll just, for my own terms. And you're kind of reinforcing just two and medical, which is what I would support. And I just want to make sure we have consensus on the direction for that.
Yes. And I support just two medical. I do not also, I do not support recreational or adult use in Morro Bay.
All right.
And I have reasons, too.
And so, I just, you know, I just want to sum that up.
Yeah.
So, where we're at. So, with, you know, I just want to know that we've got two for medical-only and, you know.
Three.
Three. Or three for medical-only? And just, all right. All right. Any more comments?
My only comment to that is that I understand the logic. I see where it's coming from in terms of safety. However, one thing that I want to bring up is, this is still going to be happening. And so, in terms of keeping the city as safe as possible, knowing what is going on, I do believe would be safer than not knowing. So, by just saying, okay, two medical dispensaries, that's wonderful, great, we definitely need them. However, I'm still very leery about the other side of the coin there. And so, that's why I brought it up, saying, you know, we might want to have at least two dispensaries. One has to be medical, and the other one could be medical or it could be recreational, simply because it's answering the need of, from our public, that have, they've already spoken and said, this is what they would want. So, I just don't want to necessarily make it then become so prohibitive down the line, when then we're going to put it onerous on the police department, then people are saying, whoa, what's going on? There's, these adults are using this substance, and it's being delivered. So, all of a sudden, we go from, yeah, I understand your point, that just medical-only, then all of a sudden, it could become, putting a lot of energy, you know, power, not necessarily power, but making the police department have to do a lot of work there. Okay? So, that's my point.
And I would like to say that, I think it was 64% of our citizens in Morro Bay voted for Proposition 64, which makes permissible adult use. And I would like to represent the result of that vote with the regulations that the state is putting into place. I just don't see the difference, if you have two dispensaries side by side, one's medical and the other is adult use, I just don't see the difference between those two. So.
Well, I could just give my reasons about why. You know, the federal government still makes recreational use of marijuana illegal. And while it's been legal, medical marijuana has been legal since 1996, and the federal government has specifically stated that they will not allocate any money to prosecute or enforce the medical marijuana laws that are around the country. But they have not said that about recreational use. And with the current Attorney General, who has kind of talked about getting serious about this, there are some risks associated with having retail establishments selling recreational use or adult-use marijuana. I think that if people want to use it, that's fine. It's legal, they can buy it, they can grow it, they can use it. But I don't think we need to necessarily provide the product to them. So, that's my logic.
Okay. All right. We, if we're, okay, I think we're good with that. So, we'll just focus on the two, medical right now. And I know it seems like we can get into a lot of discussion on that, and got it, all right, good. So, basically, which takes care of five, dispensaries recreational prohibit at this point. And I think there's time to make adjustments on this. As time goes on, we'll be able to be able to do something. Six, commercial cultivation, medical recreational prohibit, is where we started on that. And I just, so, I'm just going to start from right to left?
Yeah. And I think when we talked about this in our meetings, we realized that we really don't have that much space for commercial cultivation of marijuana. And so, why go through the process of establishing regulations to deal with it when it's really not going to be that big an issue? And the county is really addressing this issue big time, since that's where the growth is going to occur in this particular aspect of it. So, that was our logic.
And do we have any, what's our ag acreage realistically? Not much, is it? I'm thinking, yeah. I mean, we're not looking, we're not looking at more, so, I mean, it's not, yeah. Any other, John?
I agree. I do not support cultivation, no.
Red?
I support it also, but I want to add environmental concerns, because we have our precious bay, and I don't like the idea of pesticides and junk floating into the bay.
All right. Cool. Thanks. And then, seven, manufacturing and testing. It says prohibit, and that's where we started off with recommendations, and I'll just start with Marla.
Yeah. Again, I think we just felt that we're just too small a town to entertain either manufacturing and testing. But I could be persuaded if other people feel that testing might be a viable industry in our town. But at this point, I would stick with this.
I am a proponent of testing. I think the issue right now that we have in this country is the fact that a significant amount of the product that's out there is not standardized, nor is it routinely tested. And, you know, in an industry now where we're going to have regulations that will allow us to actually test and fundamentally know the content of a product, both qualitatively and quantitatively, with a number of different cannabinoids that are involved in this plant, I think it becomes one of the hallmark areas of import. And I think that, from an economic development standpoint, that this industry is an important industry to control the quality of product that's out there, and that we're ripe for that kind of development. I would limit the number if we decided to go that way, but I do support testing facilities. And I'm, you know, manufacturing is still a little bit fuzzy to me as to what that means. That may mean the manufacturing of component or ancillary products associated with the use. And I don't know that we have the space for that. But testing, for me, qualitative, quantitative, I support strongly.
Okay. Matt?
I too, I too agree with what, John, you've said about testing. And however, I would say that manufacturing, with whatever different various components that might arise in this industry, and it's not necessarily, it could be, as you said, it could be some other part of the product that goes to ship some sort of product. So, I think in terms of economic development, especially with our space that we have, but then we have a lot of people, we have a lot of agriculture, county property around, we could be a nice center for people to be bringing and doing that manufacturing and testing. So, I would like to include both manufacturing with testing.
Okay. Red?
Yes. I agree wholeheartedly that testing is essential to this industry, and I don't mind Morro Bay being a leader in testing. And I can't think of any reason not to allow manufacturing, so I'm in favor of manufacturing as well.
Yeah. I would agree. I mean, I think the market will dictate it, really. I mean, I don't think there's, you know, I could see some maybe cottage manufacturing going up with, you know, just a, but I think we can at least come back with something that might identify what we want to, how we want to regulate manufacturing and testing at this point, and then we can, so, I just have to look towards Chris and Marty. You know, so we're saying, okay, manufacturing, testing, initial recommendation was prohibit, now we're looking towards allowance. And so, other than that, what would we expect to come back from you as far as regulations? And what would you like from us tonight to at least give you a starting point at a draft level?
For testing, there's going to be one license available from the state, and actually, that license is going to be valid to test both medical and adult use.
So, one license in the city of Morro Bay, based on?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's one license type.
A license type.
Yeah. Because there's 20 license types or categories the state will provide. 14 of them are cultivation, and then the rest are just one or two. So, there's one state testing license. And so, if the city was going to allow that type of operation, then the simplest thing to do would be to say that that's a valid business in the city, and then we need to do some research on whether the city would want to add to any of the state regulations already imposed, or whether the state regulations are satisfactory.
I think the biggest challenge will be what kind of building spaces, you know, Scott, you know, he'll be looking at that, and it's like, hey, you know, people may want to do it, but we will probably be challenged on really what is feasible. And so, that might be a little bit of a problem.
Is there any concern on the number here, since we've been talking about numbers of these things?
I think we did have on-year limit, so I would guess, you know, when we come back with that, we need to have some input on what we might want to limit, and why, you know, why a town of 10,000 or a community of us would want, you know, X amount, whether it's two dispensaries. So, you know, maybe we can get help on a starting point for limiting. And, you know, I'm also, I also understand that we have professionals in the audience that have been very good about providing input along the way. So, I imagine we'll be getting some of that information as we, you know, start, you know, following tonight's meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Council, additional factors we would be looking at is the fire protection systems and of the manufacturing specialty.
Thank you.
This is a new industry for us in the fire service. There is some new codes that may be coming out next year on different type of buildings and protection systems that are required. We will have to bring back some recommendations also now on the fire protection side.
And, you know, maybe that's part of the limit. You know, if it's a really toxic type of manufacturing, we just don't do that. And I think that would, that would be helpful for us to have that discussion.
There actually will be two types of manufacturing licenses, one with non-volatile chemicals, one with volatile chemicals. I can provide the council with more information on what the difference is.
I would, too volatile, personally.
Say again?
Opposed to volatile.
Yeah. I would already start. You know, I think non-volatile would be, you know, a good starting point, unless there's somebody else that wants to say something differently. No? Okay. So, let's just start with non-volatile.
Okay.
That's probably a good starting point.
Okay.
Good. Thanks.
Helps you, chief? I was just thinking about the potential for fireworks in Morro Bay.
Okay. And smiles. Anything else on manufacturing?
Well, I just want to agree.
Okay. All right. Good. Thanks. And just looking at staff, so, as we're going through this, I'm kind of doing the check-in with you to make sure that we've captured everything. And then, the eight, number eight is deliveries, and then medical on this is allow as follows. And Marla, so I'll have you start us off.
And I now confess that I am confused about exactly who is allowed to make deliveries. As I understood it earlier, it was anybody who has a valid state license could enter, so it would not be limited to just the dispensary, the brick-and-mortar dispensaries. Is that correct?
Yes. Delivery- Deliveries, just to clear up the confusion, the law specifically says that deliveries may only be made by a licensed retailer, or micro-business, or a licensed nonprofit. And deliveries actually itself just means a commercial transfer of cannabis or cannabis products, products to a customer.
Right.
So, anybody who's offering delivery services in the city of Morro Bay will, under state law, need one of those licenses.
Okay.
They might have that license in Grover Beach, they might have it in Fresno, they might have it, you know, Sacramento, but they'll need a state license.
Okay. Then I, I would stick with our recommendations here, which is that we would want to know that these people are doing business in our town, so we would require a permit, and we would have reasonable requirements, which may already be in the state law about delivery services, but we would just want to make sure that we're covered for insurance and background checks, et cetera.
The state law requires certain documents to be maintained by the delivery service. They have to have some invoicing and so forth. I don't believe that there's requirements for insurance or indemnification, which might be some items we'd look into for the city.
Right. I think we would want to add anything that makes, we want to know who these people are, not just that they're legal, but also that they obviously have insurance and they don't have felons driving, and, and that they have proof of the ability to sell. So, so that's, that's it for me.
Okay.
And I would add that I would like feedback on possibly the potential number of delivery services that we might entertain, you know, would it be open to all, and might, we have thousands that, not thousands, but, you know, 100 or so that might want a permit, and does staff have time to really vet that appropriately? So there might, might be some limitation on the number of delivery services that are allowed to deliver into the area. And then the development agreement, I think would be important to have as well. And at the end of this, I'll speak to taxation, but the, I'm assuming the excise tax will occur in the area of the sale, at the site of the sale? Or is it at the endpoint of the sale, the excise tax? I know we get nothing from that, but it's just a question. Do you know?
I believe it'll be when the transaction occurs.
So at the-
The actual sale, yeah.
So if, if the mobile entity is in Los Osos, then the tax would be in Los Osos generated? I know it goes to the state.
Yes, I believe so.
Totally. Okay. Because down the line, that may change, I'm hearing, but.
Okay. Matt?
Okay. Good on deliveries.
Red?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with deliveries as prescribed by state law. And as far as, as the number of delivery companies, they will pay a fee to do business in Morro Bay, and that, that should compensate us for the staff time that it takes.
Agreed. Yeah, I just want to make sure. We have enough staff if, I don't know that there's going to be 100 of them, but-
Yeah.
I don't know if there should be a limit or not. It's not a big deal to me, but.
Yeah.
The numbers I've heard, they're between 1,000 and 1,500 in Slow County, so it could be a large number, yeah.
Okay. I'd support all, everybody else's comments for number eight and deliveries, as stated. Number nine is deliveries recreational, and we're starting out with the recommendation of prohibit, and I'll start with Marlos.
Well, just following the logic of not allowing recreational use dispensaries in town, we followed that up with the same with deliveries. So that was the logic behind the recommendation.
And I support that. I agree.
Knowing that we might be going down the same road as we were, but I would like to point out that we are going to have, there are going to be a number of these, of these deliveries happening in any case, and we're going to be missing out on permitting fees, perhaps taxation, and then knowing where it's going to go. We're going to have people, if they choose not to find it within Morro Bay, they're going to be going to one of our local neighbors to do it. So just wanted to, you know, say that it is still going to be happening. And perhaps right now, I mean, if the vote goes down like what it, it probably will go down, perhaps we can-
You never know.
-look back at it in another year or two.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and just, I'll just add, Matt federally, that Schedule I status, although it may not, may change in the future. That, that's the whole thing for me, is the Schedule I status of marijuana still federally, and that's, I mean, who knows what the federal government's going to do?
Red?
I agree with Matt, and also with John about the possibility of the Schedule I changing. But on the other hand, too, the federal prohibition on prosecuting medical marijuana expires at the end of September and has to be renewed by Congress annually, so that could go away too. So, you know, I still am going to maintain that if we permit medical, I favor permitting adult use as well. I think we're just running the same risk with both.
I would agree with my colleagues to the left on the deliveries for the recreational. In that, in the previous discussion about recreational brick-and-mortar, you know, we had a bad experience with that from the federal standpoint, and I think, you know what, I think this is, to me, it's a compromise in, you know, in where we're at, from my view. If, if, you know, you know, federally, it becomes more stringent on the enforcement of the recreational park, I think it's less impactful from a delivery standpoint, but from a brick-and-mortar, it just wasn't, it wasn't a great experience for Morro Bay. And so I think, you know, it kind of baby steps for me, and I'd be supportive of the recreational and the deliveries at this point. And then, so, it looks like we've got consensus to come back with, you know, at least a draft consideration for deliveries on, for recreational. And, you know, of course, you know, I think, you know, all the things that apply above on the medical, you know, we need to be considering all those, those same items. And then I think that concludes all of our recommendations.
I had two comments.
And I just want to, just want to go over a couple of things from the notes as well. There are some comments from previous, there's a record-keeping, and this has to do with the state law, and so I just want to make sure we cover this, because even Marlos said the concern over edible and having some local regulation on that, but we were informed, you know, the state regulation will cover that. So as we do this, in the spirit of that, if, or, you know, maybe the draft language, if we're, basically, the question was, and the ask was to be, not to be redundant and maybe be consistent with the state law on the initial draft to start with, and then if, you know, if we feel we're comfortable with that, then we can look to see if we need to refine a local input. That, I just want to get consensus with that from council. And then, and then the other request that I have on my notes was just language, you know, make it adult use versus recreational, cannabis uses marijuana, you know, as far as when it comes back for draft language. My request, and I would ask, you know, the rest of council the way in as well, I think we just need to be consistent with our neighbor communities. So if, you know, from a, from a regional perspective, as I look at my, our fire chief and police chief, you know, there's benefits to have, be consistent in languages, and particularly with enforcement. So I would just ask that we consider being consistent with our neighboring communities at what that looks like, and just need to see, is there any support or any other comments from council on that? None? Okay. And then, I'm just trying to cover any other comments from, that I had from the study session? And then, John? Yeah. The comment that I made, and for me, I believe it's significant, there are a number of cannabinoid products right now that are being sold as herbals. And, and my concern is that, you know, it's really questionable as to if they fall within these regulations or not. However, the control over those products will not be the same as the control over the process we're going through right now with, with cannabis. And so somewhere along the line, I think it's important for us as a city to consider the cannabinoid market and, and get further definition from you, Chris, on the opportunities to ban the sale of, of those entities, those agents that might be contained in, in so-called healthy products for disease state treatment, that do not fall under this licensure, and get clarification on that, because it's, I think it's a significant issue. And then two, I'd like to, to have council bring back opportunities for taxation on what we consider here.
Yeah.
Because I think there might be revenue opportunities that we could miss, and so I'd like to know what the alternatives might be for us, and what some examples of like cities are in terms of taxation.
I could address some of the taxation now if you want, or I could bring it back later. It's the council's pleasure.
We, you'd address it as in comments, or just bring it back with the draft?
Oh, I mean, I could discuss examples from other cities and what they do and revenue and, or we could talk about it later.
I think we can come, we can come back with that.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there any, is there a consensus with that? Okay, good. All right. Anything else then?
Only whether or not we want to hold another public workshop on it.
Open for discussion on that. I imagined we would come back with this draft ordinance, and we would have, you know, that discussion, whether or not we want to do the same type of format where we have a special meeting, and it, that gives, it's focused on that, and then we can come back in the same item on the council, and maybe next time we'll arrange it to where it's, you know, back-to-back, and then we can do it that way. I don't know if that's sufficient for you, or if you're looking more of a workshop on it?
I only brought it up because we did promise the community that we would have one, but we have had multiple opportunities-
We have, yes.
-for citizen input on this issue, and certainly tonight as well, and there will be another opportunity. So I like your idea of maybe doing it like we did this today.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would support that, because I'm not sure what else, what else we would gain from another workshop that we haven't already heard, and I think we're in a process now where public comment in reaction to our draft is going to be the most valuable input that we're going to get.
Agree. Yeah. Good. All right. Okay. Any other comments then? So I know you're, we were following along point by point, so we're, we're good. So as far as, you know, particular motion on this, I think we could just basically move forward based on council direction on the recommended items listed, and come back to a special meeting as determined. I think we can have the subcommittee maybe determine and maybe coordinate timelines. I know we want to kind of keep the timeline going, and I rely on the subcommittee to make sure, work with you all to, on the timeline with that, and then city manager and I work on agendas as well. So any other additional comments? Is that?
That sounds great.
Okay.
You don't need a motion.
I just want to confirm.
Do you need a motion?
We're good?
We could have a motion for staff to, and city attorney to come back with an ordinance after meeting with the subcommittee to realize the direction that was given.
So I would move that, that the staff take the inputs that were given tonight from council and return with a proposed ordinance after meeting with the subcommittee and appropriate staff, no later than? You want a date certain?
I would think first meeting in October.
First meeting in October of the city council.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
None? Motion carries 5-0. All right. Perfect. Unless there's anything, any other discussion on that, we'll conclude that item, and then we can move back to item C1. And can we take just a five-minute recess, and then we'll kick off on item C1? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll be right back.